Counsel, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest or nature thereof? See none. Moving on to the approval of the council minutes. We'll start with the minutes of the council meeting held on July 9th, moved by Councilor Wilkinson, seconded by Councilor, or sorry, Deputy Mayor, all in favor. And that's carried. And then there are the minutes of the closed council meeting held on July 9th as well, moved by Councilor Hammond, seconded by Councilor Dunn, all in favor. And that's carried. Was there any business arising out of the minutes? I see none. Then we'll move on to Court of Revision, and I will turn this portion of the meeting over to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I just want to say the members present of the Court of Revisions are myself, John Hammond, Councilor Hammond, Councilor Jacobs, Councilor Thiessen, and Councilor Wilkinson. So I need a motion then to move into Court of Revisions, moved by Councilor Hammond, seconded by Councilor Thiessen, all in favor. Thank you. Is there, I need to know if anybody has disclosure of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof. Seeing none, we'll move on to the Engineers' Report of the Silver Creek Drain Reprisement Bridge for Lynda End's, DR 1119. I guess, Luanne, do you have anything to come up? Are you doing this, or just, anybody have any questions? Need a motion then? Moved by Councilor Jacobs, seconded by Councilor Thiessen. Is there any questions on the motion? Is there anybody here from the public about this bridge? I know we had one gentleman before when it first brought up, but he was, he knew his assessment then. All those in favor? Carried, thank you. I need a motion now to close the Court of Revisions. Councilor Wilkinson, Councilor Jacobs, all in favor? Thank you. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Moving on to the reports of staff and delegations, and I believe the CIO would like to speak to Article 11, Point 11.
Yes, thank you, Mayor McDonald. With respect to Report 1111, after giving it a little more consideration, Administration is asking for, asking Council for a little bit more time to look at this issue and bring it back at an appropriate time in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Newfeld. We're moving on to the waiving of the picnic shelter fees. And for that, I'll ask Ms. Roach. Pardon? Oh, sorry. 11.1. Oh, sorry, I was thinking that was part of Court of Revision. Sorry, Laura. So then, we are going to ask for the Drainage Superintendent, sorry, Luanne. Multitasking is a trial.
Thank you, Mayor, members of Council. Administration received a request from the owner of parcel 76004 to alter their site by way of a construction of a new greenhouse facility, an establishment of repacking parking area. Baird AE was appointed to prepare the necessary Engineers' Report under Section 65 of the Drain and Jacks. Excuse me. The engineer has completed the review of the Silver Creek, the Silver Creek Drain West Branch, the Lebo Creek Drain Seventh Concession Branch, and the Lebo Creek Drain Northwest Branch. This property was assessed into all of those parcels. So we have rediverted their water, the majority of it going to the Silver Creek Drain. That being said, there is going to be a buy-in fee of $753. Since we last cleaned the drain, we've determined that that's what their fair assessment would have been, if they would have been partake, assessed into it at that time. So we're disconnecting the same parcel from the Silver Creek West Branch, which they no longer drain to, and still keeping some of their water into the Lebo Creek North Branch. This report is paid 100% by the landowner, and it does reflect our new stormwater management report created by the municipality.
Great, thank you, Luanne. Councilor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Luanne, on this, does that go into the same watershed, or is that a different watershed that would drain into that?
You might want to turn on your...
The Silver Creek Drain heads in a west-north direction, and the Lebo Creek comes east-southerly to the Hillman Marsh. So it was in two completely different watersheds. So their existing development will remain into the Lebo, but their new development, they're bringing it all over into the Silver Creek.
And just out of curiosity, what role does ERCA play in this? Do you have to go through them to come to these agreements, or do they...
Not with Section 65. Section 65 only deal with the assessments, the value or the amount of acreage, and what is happening on the property, farmland versus covered lands. ERCA doesn't see Section 65 reports.
And what are Council's wishes, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this is just an assessment report. Are they going to be eventually closing this in?
No.
Because I had, I had a question from one landowner that says he's a little worried about them closing this in, and if he's going to have any backlash with water coming on his property. I said I'll bring it up tonight.
If I may through you, Mayor, we do have a request from another landowner on the Silver Creek Drain to relocate a portion of the drain, but not this particular landowner.
Thank you.
That one's between the eighth and the ninth concession.
Moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilor Wilkinson, all in favor. And that's carried. Thanks, Luanne. Now, we're moving on to the waiving of the picnic shelter fees, and again, Ms. Laura Roach.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. On July 5th of this year, Administration received a delegation request to waive the picnic shelter fees for the school functions such as a field trip. Mr. Servini, Principal from Gore Hill Public School, is in attendance this evening to discuss the matter further. So fees are established by Council every year and are intended to recover some or all of the cost for reserving municipal public space for exclusive use. Administration applies fees that Council approves and is not in a position to waive fees without approval from Council. So as directed by Council, Administration does attempt to refer all requests for the waiving of these fees for consideration at budget time. The fee is minimal for the picnic shelter, affordable, and already significantly subsidized by the taxpayers of Leamington. A small fee at least requires the users to have a stake in the rental relationship. The hourly rental for the picnic shelter is $15. This specific request is for $45 for the event held on June 24th. The amount is currently outstanding and is subject to penalty as of July 1st. The municipality's free structure, fee structure, is the same philosophy applied by the school boards, who charge a fee for using school board facilities and a discounted fee for nonprofits. Even though the loss of revenue is negligible, the consistent application of Council-approved fees is important. If fees are waived for one school, they should likely be waived for all. The request will inevitably be extended to other nonprofit and charities, including out-of-town schools, private schools, charities, religious organizations, and potentially special interest nonprofits. There are many school rentals throughout the year that occur for the use of other public municipal facilities, including the pool and ice rentals at the complex. So at this time, Administration is recommending that the request to waive the Seacliff Park picnic shelter fees be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. I thought that during our last term, that we had enacted a policy whereby department heads and/or our legal department could rule on matters such as this without bringing it forward to Council. I mean, we're talking about here about $45 or $50. And I thought we had, we had put some steps into place to stop these kinds of things coming forward.
Did anyone want to speak to that? Because I certainly don't recall it. Mr. Newfeld?
Well, I'm, I'm looking over at my director's table as well, and their, the look on their faces is the same as mine, that I don't recall that coming forward on something like this. Quite to the contrary, I think that when you have something where somebody is asking for one of our bylaws to be waived, that is the, not within the discretion of Administration. And those are the sorts of things that Council would want to have brought to them. Now, it's only $51 in this particular case, and I understand where you're coming from, but I don't, I don't recall that, that delegation of a...
I'm very likely mistaken about something else, but you know, and it maybe will come back to me at some other point, what we're dealing with, but I thought there was something along these lines so that they had some authority to do that, but nevertheless, yeah.
Did you want to speak to it at all?
Yes, in light of that, I mean, it is a very small amount, but however, and I agree with the report that Laura gave, is that if we open that door and we start allowing all the schools, we'll be wanting, and where do you, where do you stop? And we've heard this argument many times in the past. It's this, in this case, it's three hours. It could be the next time, five and six hours, and where do you, where do you make a decision? So with that, I'll vote against it.
Oh, look, may I go to Councilor Jacobs next? Councilor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What these rentals, is there like a cleanup fee after, or do they clean up, or like, do we do anything following, once it's rented out?
Through you, Mayor McDonald. Of course, the shelter is cleaned up after the use of it, but the only charge that we charge anyone for the use of the facility is a $15 hourly rental. So that is meant to cover some of those costs. Obviously, it doesn't cover all of them.
And I guess that's where I was going with this, because we do have a cost associated with municipality when these facilities are utilized, and that, and that, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Servini, did you want to speak to this at all? Give us your name and your address, if you don't mind. We won't, we won't look you up.
That's okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and to give this proposal to you. Bill Servini, 24 Cherrywood Avenue in Leamington. If I can just maybe ask for some clarification on the report, if that's acceptable. So I'm noticing the part about it's how it's the gathering for families and business outings and everything, and Laura speaks about the summer and how popular it is. School is closed in the summer, that, that wouldn't be a problem. There would be no competition, the board is not able to, and schools wouldn't authorize any type of a school function during the summer when there aren't, there isn't appropriate supervision. Secondly to that, and I apologize if the request wasn't clear, I'm asking for the Leamington schools only. Kingsville has a park, Cotum has a park, Essex has a park, and those schools can certainly use those facilities to their benefit. And again, it's using your own community and appreciating what you have. The last thing that I wanted to ask about is, we're talking about the minimal fee and to have that rental relationship. I certainly, in my own experiences, know that a lot of establishments have a deposit system, where you put a deposit in place so that if there is damage, or if something's not clean, or something's not appropriate, that deposit would be held. That would still be your guarantee of income for those respects. I absolutely understand that $51 is not a lot of money to you, but to a school budget, it is a lot of money. And certainly, again, that partnership and having that opportunity to use that facility, which would likely not be longer than three hours, because normally the children would just have lunch and probably relax, and then continue in whatever activities they would have at the park. In the case of the field trip that my grade six, sorry, my junior classes had, they had a piece of lunch there, and then they were done. They really weren't there for the three hours, but just to be sure, I made sure that we had that amount of time for the children.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Counselor Wilkinson?
Just reading ahead here a little bit, I think I know the answer to this, but if we look forward in the report, for this one, the recommendation was to not support it, but the next report coming, we will be supporting a waiving of fee for the amphitheater. I think the reason you're going to probably tell me, and this is kind of how I'm justifying it as well, to do one against the other. I look at it this way, Bill, you know, you do get funding from the province, of course, which comes back from the taxpayer, and is a miniscule amount. Where in the next report, we're going to be, it's a fundraising effort, where there is no funding at the beginning of it to support that. So I'm looking to the author of these two reports here, Laura, to just give me a little bit of the reason behind the support for the one, but not the support for the other, and does it kind of line up with the way I just thought you might be thinking?
Through you, Mayor McDonald. Yes, Councilor Wilkinson, you're definitely on the right path there. In the 2019 budget, we fully anticipated that the amphitheater rentals for nonprofits, specifically HOGs, we anticipated those applications to come forward, and because of timing, we couldn't have the applications submitted and in time for budget. But we did have a provision in the 2019 budget for that. And so that is the reason for our recommendation on the amphitheater fees. This is something new that we've, that has come forward. And again, to what Peter said, you know, we, we apply the fees consistently as Council has approved, so that's why it's before you today.
Thank you very much. I just thought that was worth saying, Bill, in case you're reading ahead as well at our reports here, and you might think one might fly in the face of the other. I just wanted to get a little explanation for that, why that is. So, but I'm very sympathetic to the school, of course, you know that, but I don't think it's ridiculous here what the fees that's been asked for, for the service that we provide there. So I too am thinking along the same lines as Councilor Hammond.
Well, I'm going to be the only voice in the wilderness from the sounds of it. I've had a bit of a burr on for a number of years, ever since we put in the splash pad, because I was informed that lots of Kingsville schools come and use our splash pad. And to me, that's fine, that's how we get the money, is them using our shelter. So to me, to give our own schools a bit of a, of a break on this, I'd much rather see them using them, because despite what Mr. Servini says, they don't go to the splash pads in their own communities. Kingsville Public does not go, has not gone to Cotum. They've come to Leamington, and it, and they're not the only ones. So to me, if, I would be willing to give Leamington schools a pass on this, because I think that's who we want to see using our, our facilities, not, not the people in neighboring communities. And I know we can't keep that from happening, and we do like people to use our facilities, but I would like to see our own schools get a bit of a break over the other schools that are coming. That's just my point of view, and it sounds like I'm the only one, but I do think it, like I said, it's been a, just a bit of a niggler for me, because our taxpayers have paid for the splash pad, and we know it's busy on the weekends, but at least for our schools, we could give our own residents a bit of, a bit of an extra perk, if you will. But with that, I will ask Council what they'd like to do. Counselor, or sorry, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I like Mr. Servini's approach to putting a down payment down, and then us holding the money, and then releasing it back, and if there is damage.
Sorry, I was just listening to...
I thought maybe there was one, but the way that Bill talked, there wasn't, so I would like to see it implemented that way too. I don't know when, sooner than later, but that we hold the money, and like I say, if I'm in agreement with you too, it's, it's the schools, because I know there's going to be another group coming through for the amphitheater too, for non-rental, the Mayak. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're on the same page. So I would, I would probably not support the decision, the recommendation.
Okay, well, Counselor Wilkinson speak, and then we'll see where we go from there. Counselor Wilkinson?
Mayor, I, I don't think that's a bad idea at all. I wish we would have talked maybe ahead of time on this one here, so I could have, if you'd want to make a recommendation or adjustment to the motion, I'd certainly entertain that.
I'm not sure the Chair can do that. It would need to be you, sir. If that's your wish. Or I can go to the next Counselor that wants to speak, it's up to you.
Just hearing that thought here on the fly from what you said, I don't think that's, I don't think that's out of line for us to, for just the shelter for the Leamington schools. I think it's a good idea, actually. So I have no harm with that. It's going to be 45, or sorry, how many, how many dollars here for...
I think it's 51 total.
$51? Sure. I will, I would put that in a motion that we consider that for the Leamington schools, waiving of the park fees, or sorry, the shelter fees. With the deposit, though, I think is...
With a refundable deposit?
Yes.
And how much would that be for the full amount, for the number of hours?
I'd maybe refer to Laura on that one to provide a number for that. We could probably come back with that, I guess.
Through you, Mayor McDonald. We'll, we'll look at consideration, and we'll, we'll make something that's appropriate, if that's okay with Council.
I think we can leave it open-ended like that, can we? Yes. So your motion is that we exempt Leamington schools from the rental price of the shelter?
Yes.
But with a refundable deposit?
Yes.
Based on the condition of the shelter after use?
Correct.
Can I get a second or first? Is that okay, just to get it on Counselor Dunn? Did you want to speak to that, Mr. Newfeld?
My suggestion would be that we deal with this particular request tonight alone, and understanding where Council would like us to go, that Administration come back with some recommendations on that, rather than creating a whole new resolution around this particular request. I would suggest that Council, if that's the way Council wants to go, that they approve the request of Mr. Servini, and Administration will come back with a, with a report to deal with the Leamington schools as you have indicated.
Do you like the wording of that recommendation from the CIO?
So I should pull my motion then, I'm guessing? And that's what I'll do, I will pull that, my last motion.
And that's what he said?
Yes.
And with a second or agree, it was, I believe it was Counselor Dunn?
Just waiving.
Waiving the fee?
Yeah, so what I'm suggesting is that the recommendation tonight from Ms. Roach was that the, the request be denied. And so in this situation, we can deal with this particular issue by allowing the request. In, in other words, you would be not agreeing with the recommendation, but rather agreeing with the request, and that would put an end to this particular situation, and we'll come back as it relates to Leamington schools and the use of our shelter.
Okay, that's on the floor then. Counselor Hammond, you had something to say?
Your worship, yes, and I, I think that's a great point is brought forward by, by Peter, because I think that we should look at, when we, when we talk about this, as Mr. Servini alluded to, they don't use them during the summer. And I think that that should be a part of it, because, and I do know some schools do have summer programs that they run, and because, and I've been involved in it for years, you know, with my grandkids and kids, but, but if, if they're not going to use it in the summer, then let's put that into the agreement, because moving forward, if we have a school wanting to use one of our shelters for three hours for $45, it precludes some other group from coming in and want, who's going to want to rent it for the, for the entire day. So I think we really need to take a look at that. I hope you understand where I'm coming from, Mr. Servini, here. I, it isn't the $45 or $50, just trying to get some consistency with the policy. So that's all my, my suggestion would be, Laura, is that we look at just limiting the time of when this, when, when the schools can use it and be waived.
But we're not going to discuss that at this point in time, but that's a good consideration, thank you. So you remember what the, what the motion is then?
Can I just get confirmation on that?
Certainly.
So if I'm reading this right, and from what Peter says, I, by, we'll deal with the matter here, and, and then we'll come back in the future here with the, with, yes, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so all in favor of the recommendation that Counselor Wilkinson put forward? That Counselor Wilkinson put forward? All in favor? Opposed? Yes?
No, I'm confused. What recommendation are we, we've got a recommendation from Administration here.
I said the one that Counselor Wilkinson said. Would you like the clerk to read it?
Please.
The request for the waiving of Seacliff Park picnic shelter fees be approved.
Shall I ask again then? So all in favor of the recommendation as put forward by Counselor Wilkinson? That's carried, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Servini. Moving on to the waiving of the amphitheater fees, and that is you as well, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Administration has received a request to waive the amphitheater fees, as we previously spoke about, for HOGs, for hospice weekend this year. Joe Oswald from the HOGs for Hospice team is here tonight, if Council has any questions. The amphitheater and the majority of Seacliff Park, including the picnic shelter, are part of the HOGs weekend activities. The event brings a significant draw to Leamington, including great economic benefits, and showcases our local business owners and restaurants. This being the first year that there were Council-approved fees for the rental of the amphitheater, the 2019 budget included $10,500 for requests for fee exemptions for nonprofit organizations. So given the timing of budget discussions and amphitheater facility applications, as I mentioned, funds were set aside for Council to consider as these requests came forward. This event is three days at Seacliff Park, with one day of setup and one day of tear-down, and the total fees are $3,500 plus HST. On a go-forward, Administration will reach out to Mr. Oswald and the HOGs for Hospice Group during the grant application intake for consideration in the 2020 budget. So the recommendation for this report is that the request for waiving of the amphitheater fees for HOGs for Hospice event be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Oswald, did you want to speak at all to that, before I turn it over to Council? Name an address, please, sir.
Joe Oswald, 248 Cherrywood Drive in Kingsville, Ontario. Have you ever known me not to want to say something?
No.
Thank you, Laura, for, for your support. We do believe in the event that we've built, and when, when we look at the amphitheater, we look at it in two different ways. It is an amphitheater that you've put in place to celebrate the arts, which is very, very important to this community, but it's also an economic revenue driver to support tourism. And trust me in the line of work that I'm in, no one respects revenue more than I do, and I get it, it makes sense. Where I feel our event is a little unique, and we've said this many a times in front of Camp Council, is that the economic driver and the revenue that this event has driven in this community, we believe is significant. From the hotels, restaurants, retail outlets, the list goes on, we believe that through those economic municipal tax dollars, we would more than compensate for the fee of this. I do believe in the fees for the amphitheater, but in this case, because of the injection of new dollars to our community, and new dollars to our municipality and to our residents, we are asking at this point in time for you to support us that we can continue the journey that we did start.
Thanks.
fees for Hogs for Hospice event be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Oswald, did you want to speak at all to that before I turn it over to Council? Name an address, please, sir.
Uh, Joe Oswald, two forty-eight Cherrywood Drive in Kingsville, Ontario. Have you ever known me not to want to say something?
No.
Uh, thank you, Laura, for, for your support. We do believe in the event that we've built. And when, when we look at the amphitheater, we look at it in two different ways. It is an amphitheater that you've put in place to celebrate the arts, which is very, very important to this community. But it's also an economic revenue driver to support tourism. And trust me in the line of work that I'm in, no one respects revenue more than I do. And I get it. It makes sense. Where I feel our event is a little unique, and we've said this many of times in front of Camp Council, is that the economic driver and the revenue that this event has driven in this community, we believe is significant. Uh, from the hotels, restaurants, retail outlets, the list goes on. We believe that through those economic municipal tax dollars, we would more than compensate, uh, for the fee of this. I do believe in the fees for the amphitheater, but in this case, because of the injection of new dollars to our community and new dollars to our municipality and to our residents, uh, we are asking at this point in time for you to support us that we can continue the journey that we did start.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Counsel Hammond?
You worship, thank you. For all the reasons that Joe has already outlined, and the reason that this Council, uh, a few years back made a commitment when Hogs and the, and the, uh, the concept of Hogs coming to Leamington was brought to us, that we would do whatever we can to try and support this group. And because of their fundraising efforts and the amount of work that goes into this. And, um, especially in, in light of the fact that the revenue or the bulk of the revenue from this goes to hospice and, um, unfortunately, um, hospice has become a very intricate part and a crucial part in our community and needs the funding. And I think, again, because we made this commitment to Hogs and to Joe and his entire team a few years back, I think we need to continue on and honor that commitment. So having said that, I'll move for the acceptance of the report.
Seconded by Counsel Dunn. Counsel Teason, did you want to speak to this?
Just briefly. So I, I agree with everything that Counsel Hammond and Joe have mentioned. And they did come before us this, this year for the grants. And we decided that there were some discussions around some fencing and some, some, maybe some partnership. That apparently didn't transpire, but the money was still set aside for this. But maybe we should still take this out of the CIO fund.
All in favor and that's carried. Sorry, sorry. I got ahead of myself, Mr. Newfeld.
Those, those monies remain there and there is discussion around the installation of a sound system, uh, down at the, uh, at the, uh, Seacliff Park. Because that was a secondary component of the request by the Hogs for Hospice, especially as it relates to, uh, safety issues. So for example, in the case of emergency, if a, if a storm were to arise all of a sudden, we really don't have a manner in which to, uh, communicate with everybody in the park. So, uh, Administration is exploring that. We have a proposal, but we are, we're looking at how else that we can, uh, do that. And so that money right now is being held for that particular project.
Counsel Hammond, Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say to Joe that I think everyone really appreciates between you and your committee, which you have done for this municipality. And to me, the, the big thing is the donation to hospice. Uh, the, what comes in with hospice to me is a secondary, because the main focus is the hospice center that we all utilize here within our municipality. And I, I just want to say thank you and for the continued work. I know you guys work hard. I've seen you on a Sunday morning cleaning up the park and, you know, it's, it's really something when you're out there. So I hope it all goes well again, Joe. Thank you.
If you'll indulge me for a minute, um, ditto for what the, my colleague said. But I think, Joe, when we go back to the moment in time when Hogs for Hospice, you first brought it forward, and then of course, after the success of that first year, I, I do believe when we examine closely, like dissect these, the mood that is out there now, and so many people have said to us how positive the mood is and how we've, we've turned a corner, I'm gonna say that that was probably the first spark that our community realized that this was possible. And I think after that, things just started to go this way. Um, we can attribute it to many little things along the way, but I do believe that you and your committee made this community realize that great things were possible. Because I think we were a bit of a low, at a, um, maybe not a rut, but we were at a low point. And I think once we saw how successful this was and how much our community bought into it, for all the reasons that my colleagues just said, but it changed the spirit. And I think you need to take credit for that. And I think the rest of us can, Council and so on, can take credit for other moments in time, but initial, that was the initial spark to me. So with that, I will call the question. All in favor? And that's carried unanimously. We'll see you in a week and a half.
And if I could, and if I could just, one more comment. We're, we're so proud. Our, our, our community ambassadors have, have grown to close to five, five hundred this year.
Wow.
Uh, we now have five local churches that have closed their doors on the Sunday to come together for one non-denominational service where people can come together. We now have the OPP Golden Helmets coming on board. And the laundry list is, is long, but I wish this room was filled right now so they could hear these words from me. The support and the belief that this town council has had since the birth of this has not over been, has not only been overwhelming, but it's been humbling. We love this community, but it doesn't matter how much you love it if you don't have the support of your municipality. And not for one moment have you waived it. You've asked questions because it's the right thing to do to get clarity, because you have the best interest of this community in mind. We are overwhelmed and humbled and forever grateful for everything that this municipality has done for us since its birth. And we will never, ever take it for granted and we will forever be grateful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Our pleasure. Okay. Moving on to the John Street, Erie Street North to Queen's Avenue Traffic Study. And Albert? That is you, young man?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Del Bracco.
So the recommendation before you this evening is that Council receive the John Street, Erie Street North to Queen's Avenue Traffic Impact Study prepared by R.C. Spencer Associates. And that the John Street from Erie Street North to Queen's Avenue Parking Lot be converted to a one-way westbound street. In 2018, Council received and approved the Uptown Leamington Master Plan prepared by Spencer Associates as the basis for future development in Uptown Leamington. The purpose to create a mixed-use space that provides attractive, efficient, and accessible choices for the public, in concert with automobiles. The plan addresses the need for convenient, accessible parking and supports the vision for the Uptown area as a vibrant area for business and public activities. The John Street Corridor from Queen's Avenue to Erie Street North is close to and connects many important features of the Uptown area. This includes the John Street Queen's Ave Parking Lots, the Leamington Post Office, the United Church, the Leamington Public Library, the Italian Centennial Park, St. John's Anglican Church. Uh, existing traffic at the intersection of John Street at Erie North could be described as congested, even with eastbound John Street traffic restricted to right turns only. The remaining turning movement is often restricted or delayed because of long queues, which develop from the southbound Erie Street traffic waiting for a green light at the traffic signal at Talbot Street East, or West. It is important to maintain access from Erie to Queen's Avenue Municipal Parking Lot so that shoppers and visitors alike have a direct access to parking facilities in Uptown Leamington. Accordingly, the recommended configuration from the Uptown Master Plan proposed one-way westbound traffic on John Street from Erie Street to the Queen Street Parking Lot, after which John Street returns to a two-way street as depicted in Figure One. The proposed configuration satisfies the traffic need, allows the lane to be shifted south, expanding the Centennial Park green space and enhancing green space for the library. R.C. Spencer Associates was retained by the municipality by way of request for proposal for the John Street Sewer Separation and Road Reconstruction Project. Council approved the appointment at its meeting held May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The assignment included a traffic impact study particular to addressing the one-way westbound John Street recommendation. R.C. Spencer has completed the necessary traffic counts, analyzed the data, and completed the traffic impact study. The summary and conclusions of the study are as follows. The most significant traffic operations problem in the study area is the interference of the southbound Erie Street traffic queuing up to and through the intersection of John Street during many hours of a typical day. Conversion of John Street to a one-way westbound eliminates the biggest part of this problem, which is unsafe and prohibited eastbound left turns at John Street, as well as eastbound right-turning vehicles forcing their way into the southbound queue. There are no significant problems created by redistributing the existing eastbound traffic on John Street to alternate routes via Queen's Avenue or Clark Street, or John Street and Albert Fox, uh, the intersection. Conversion of John Street to a one-way westbound to the Queen's Avenue Parking Lot affords an opportunity to enlarge the public space around the Italian Centennial Park. All these changes are consistent with the principles of walkable community, communities, which were the basis of the approved master plan. As noted in the report, there are no real benefits to traffic movements by maintaining two-way traffic on John Street. Accordingly, it is recommended that the plan as presented in the Uptown, the approved Uptown Master Plan, with the conversion of John Street from Erie Street North to Queen's Avenue Parking Lot, to a one-way westbound be adopted as the basis for the final design and reconstruction. The decision is required to be made now so that the design of the area can proceed. The entire report from R.C. Spencer is attached under a separate cover. And with the respect to the expansion of the public space in the Centennial Park, Administration arranged for a structural survey of the existing fountain. The survey concluded that the structure was found to be in very good structural condition. As a result, it is the intent of Administration to look at renewing the fountain as part of the overall project. The Italian community will be engaged on the proposed renewal through discussions with the Roma Club executives. There is no financial impact at this time, as the design works are already accounted for as part of the proposal submitted by R.C. Spencer and Associates. And I have the authors of the traffic impact study with me here tonight. So if you have any questions, be more than happy answering.
Okay, Counsel. Counsel Dunn?
You, Madam Mayor. Alex, I, I talked to John briefly. There's, uh, first of all, um, with an Masonic Hall beside the library there, we have two handicap parking spaces. That's blocking their driveway. And I, I expressed that, uh, to John as well. We keep putting that in that place. We have to make sure that their driveway is accessible. Secondly, I like the fact the trees are, and we have more walking space, but I'm concerned about, to me, is the, the parking spaces that we lose. Especially as we draw more tourism into our area, um, and losing those parking spaces that seem to be at a premium. Um, I heard comments regarding, um, forest is great, but losing parking spaces down there and we have drawing more and more crowds to it, that is my concern on this. I'll leave it at that and hear what other councils have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dunn. I have the Deputy Mayor next.
We're the mayor, thanks. Uh, it's a pretty good concept. I'm not gonna say it's stellar or anything. But my one concern is, you're taking this traffic now, John Street going to, to exit now, say on Queen Street. So we're gonna go Queen Street North. And the only way I can get back there that I want to go quick is I'm gonna take Clark East. And I'm gonna end up there at that intersection of where Blondie's was. And I want to turn left. Two cars behind me want to turn left. There's cars turning right. And all of a sudden now, there's a fire call. Are you not gonna signal that intersection? Or what happens now with emergency response? Are they gonna have to look for an alternate route? Because I've seen that four cars backed up anyway right now. And there's gonna be more traffic now coming off of John because the people that are turning left off of John now won't be able to do that well. So I just want to make sure that there's a, a plan in place for emergency, the fire department, since it's located there. Because I know before we talked about a streetlight, we've kiboshed that. But, uh, I know it's not really part of this, but yes, it is because we're redirecting traffic from there to there. And if you want, well, I'm not gonna take Clark because it's too busy. So I'm gonna take Hazelton. Well, I can't see nothing on Hazelton when I look to the left. That site triangle should be cleaned up. There are some flowers there and pots, and I don't know if they're ours or not. I'm gonna assume they're not ours, but they're on our property. And there's been a couple squealing of tires, stopping. And then with the congestion of the, the bike lane where it's located, it's just a dog's breakfast there. So I hope that's all taken into consideration when, uh, this potentially comes to plan.
Did we want to speak to that or are we just going to let it go? Counselor, or sorry?
You worship, just on that, northbound movements from John Street onto Erie Street currently are prohibited. It's, you can only...
I know what they're doing. I know. That's, that's beside the point now.
Oh, despite, okay.
It says no... It says no left-hand turns on John and Erie, but they're still doing it. So I'm just saying, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about turning left on the, off of Clark to head north, when everybody else is coming north on Erie, want to turn left on to Clark. And you got three cars turning left and all of a sudden there's a fire. You're not gonna be able to get around there. And I'm sure I have gone through the parking lot there before to cut through there because it's, nobody's got, you know, I'm in a hurry. Nobody's got time for anything anymore.
Did, did you, Mr. Toffelmeyer, want to speak to that?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of Council. Uh, and through you in response, the, um, uh, intersection at Clark Street was a subject of a separate analysis a couple of years ago, I want to say. And our, we did the analysis and we concluded that actually signals were warranted because of the sightline. So that is already on your plate and you have the discretion to do that. We didn't, um, uh, want to go piling on, on the issue. So, uh, that is a report that stands on its own and is really unchanged by anything uh, in this report. If anything, we would confirm, uh, the, the warrants are met.
Thank you, Mayor. But through that, I noticed your, your whole drawing of all the stoplights, Clark and Erie Street don't have the little stoplights there, so it's not in your plan as we speak?
We, uh, represented the status quo in our, uh, report and did the capacity analysis based on the current traffic control. The separate report on the warrants really, um, rolled into the sightline and the emergency response issues that you cited. And we concluded when we did that analysis that that did warrant, um, the signal and, it would solve the problems that you suggested. We just considered that it was a separate file from what we were charged with here. And we don't think, I guess I'd say it this way. This recommendation doesn't change the status quo at Clark and Erie in any significant way. It is, uh, a problem now, as you've described. It would stay basically unchanged until you decide what to do with it as, uh, regards the signal.
Further, uh, Mayor, that, uh, I agree with you, but you did do a traffic count at Clark and Erie. So that's why I'm bringing it up. And was there a fire call at the time you did the traffic count?
No, no, there wasn't.
So I mean, I, I, sometimes I don't believe your numbers because...
Right.
Not that, because I, I know there's either more traffic or less traffic. I'm not gonna...
Those considerations were taken into account in the warrant analysis that I spoke to.
Thank you.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. John, since I first seen this plan a couple of years ago, we came over to your place that night in the wintertime. This is the piece, the component that I was most excited about, you know? Mill Street's fantastic, what we've done there, but this one here I thought was a really outside-the-box thought. What I liked about it was the expansion of the parkland there. Uh, and the one-way idea, I think is, uh, I don't know, I think it's a unique, a little bit of a game changer in that area. I've often found it to be kind of a traffic trap. If you get yourself into that area and you only got a choice to go north there, you can be stuck there, uh, for considerable amount of time. So I don't really use it to begin with. It makes sense to me that way. So I, I, I do like this, uh, this design. And the biggest part for me is just the expansion of the parkland out in front of there, our new library, uh, our newly-developed library that's gonna take on a whole new life of its own here real soon. I, I'm excited about this. I don't think people realize or have taken the time to look at this, this design. All they're really hearing about here is just shutting down and going to a one-way. I think they need to look at the big picture here to grasp the reason I get excited about it. But I did ask Alex here earlier this week, I do want to make sure, just because I like the design, and if Council supports it or doesn't support it here tonight, the public will still have a chance to provide input into this. Alex, can you confirm that for me? Yes or no?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes. With all of our sewer separation projects and road reconstructions, we do have a public open house. So, um, we need to approve the design or the, the functional design here tonight so we can go and, and put the proper turning radiuses on and, you know, complete the survey, make sure we have the space to do what we want to do, get those design drawings together and then meet with the public. We'll get about sixty percent done and then we'll meet with the public so we can make any final tweaks based on their opinion. So...
So let's say we... So, let's say we do have our public open house, and people come out en masse, and they change the will of council where council says, "We can't do this. We've heard from the public. It's been overwhelming, and we can't do this," despite us maybe supporting us tonight. I would throw a big monkey wrench in your, in your plan at that point.
And we're back to the drawing board, I guess, right? So, I mean, we, we're here tonight to get your buy-in for this functional design and this process. If the open house happens and, you know, council's swayed to change their mind, that's your prerogative to change your mind, and if you change your mind, then we need to move a line on a page at this point as opposed to a curb on a street.
Okay. Now, going back to when the master plan, we've had public open houses for the master plans, a number of them, probably upwards of at least three or four, I'm guessing. Did we have real pushback to this area? I can't remember the data on that, but was there any pushback at that time to this design?
My recollection is that everyone was of your mind that it was a really good plan and a game changer, as you called it. That's my recollection.
Thank you. I'm good on that part. My second part is for later on in the report here. I was surprised by the comments regarding our fountain, though. From the comments I've heard over the past, and from Public Works workers, you know, there is a real safety issue with the current state of the fountain. So, I was surprised by the data that we've gotten back from, I'm not sure who, who did this, but I'm just wondering how our own staff, you know, especially maybe Public Works, you know, what's their reaction to, to this news that we've gotten back from our experts?
I'll take a stab at it, your worship. Well, the fountain, there's no doubt the fountain needs some rehabilitation, but I think what the review wanted to take a look at was, is it structurally sound? And if we wanted to renew this particular structure, how deep would we have to go? In other words, is the structure at the end of its useful life, or does it simply need to be rehabilitated? So, you know, things that staff may see, rust staining, you know, from various support, brick pointing issues, those sorts of things, yes, all that would have to be included in the, in the rehab plan, but I think the conclusion was that the structure was sound.
Okay, moving on to Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish I could share Counselor Wilkinson's excitement for this because it doesn't do it for me. I, thinking of what the deputy mayor's statement, that even if we put stoplights on Clark Street, you're still going to have a traffic backup that would be worse than letting them go simply because we have that fire hall there. That's going to create congestion. Then we're moving traffic, even though it's two-way up to the parking lot, but no one's going to be able to go south. We're all going to have to send these cars north on Queen Street, and they're going to use, what, Clark or Hazelton, or have to go all the way out to Wilkinson Drive to get out of there. To me, it's going to be traffic congestion at its finest if we're doing this, or we're shipping them back down and sweep it on Clark, back over to Talbot. I think there's too many restrictions imposed on this. I like the concept of what we're trying to do here, but I, it's the traffic situation that really doesn't do me a warm and a fuzzy here, so I don't know. I'm going to have to take a long look at this one, I'll tell you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Jacobs, the technical results are very clear. The total amount of traffic in the worst hour is the afternoon. There's about 98, that's what we counted, 98 vehicles that were, are going toward Erie Street that would be redistributed. And frankly, when you start breaking that down, half go this way, half go that way. To begin with, 98 vehicles an hour is two vehicles every three minutes. Okay? So, it's really not a lot of traffic. And now you're distributing it over a network. So, you have Queens, you have Clark, you have Hazelton, you have Wilkinson even for north round, and as Mr. Sharon pointed out, you know, the traffic that's going north is already supposed to be going that way, and most of it does. We had maybe two, I think, each hour that were, so the people that are headed north are already incorporated into the traffic. So, the ones that you need to redistribute are the ones heading east, like myself, or south, and they distribute themselves over to the signal at Albert Street and Fox, which has plenty of spare capacity, and no congestion will be created there. So, once you distribute the traffic out, the numbers are, fall off pretty quickly, and there's just no way of measuring a problem. So, that's the technical result of the, of the counting and analysis.
Thank you. I, I respect your analysis and your statistics, and, you know, I know you know your job well, and I'm not here to debate that with you, but I, I mean, when you do statistics, sometimes which favor do you want them to work in? And, you know, you say three cars every three minutes or whatever it was that you had mentioned, but that takes into consideration, at one time, there's 10 cars there, and the next five minutes, there's no cars there. You know, I mean, like, it's, you, you do an average, and, you know, like, the averages come out, it's like doing your checkbook. Well, I'm going to average so much this month, and you overshoot it. But anyway, at least I do, but I guess where I'm going with this, going back to Clark Street, because to me, if you're going to divert off this one way, the natural road is going to be the first street that you're going to take to your right, whether you're going north or south, correct? I would, I envision that would be the street that you would take. And then again, we have to take into consideration, the emergency services are located, you've got the police there, you've got fire there, you know, and I've got that concern. I think the deputy mayor hit it right on the nail on the head, you know, like, these guys come out, they've got those large trucks. I know, I, I'm not convinced, Mr. Toffelmeyer. I guess I got to put it that way. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to, sorry, moving on to Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I too have concerns about diverting the traffic. I frequent the Queens Avenue parking lot a fair bit. When I go out, I always leave, shouldn't say always, 99% of the time, I leave going to the east on, on John Street. I used, you've got, on page 34 of your report, you've got 97 vehicles turning right currently. Now, if you divert them, you've got them going, you've got 41 going up to Clark Street. Well, if they're going south and east, most of them probably aren't going to go that way because that's just backtracking. Most of them, I, I still think are going to go down to Talbot and Mill, and you've got 57 vehicles going down Mill Street. Do we want 57 more vehicles an hour going down Mill Street? That's a pretty narrow street. It's a very slow street, and you get to the corner, it's a narrow corner, and there's no sight line, so you can't turn right on a red because you can't see the vehicles coming. To me, the logical spot is then back onto Talbot Street West, which is going to back up because there's no advanced, does that one not have an advanced left turn signal on it? It should if it doesn't, from both ways. I can't get excited about redirecting that traffic, and I don't think, a number of times in the report, it says that traffic forces itself out onto Erie Street from John Street. I don't think anybody forces. I think people will nudge out. People are very courteous and wave you out. I don't think anybody's forcing their way into there. And I haven't seen a lot of road rage there, and I haven't seen them backed up to the parking lot either. So, typically, I don't think you've got a lineup of 10 cars waiting, which to me would indicate a problem. Typically, would it be three or four cars maybe in a queue waiting to turn? That's what I, that's my experience. The other thing is all the, all the bulb oats and bump oats and narrowing of the streets, I still have a concern about that. Frankly, I'm surprised that we don't, we're always talking about the bike lanes and bike paths, and we have them appearing in the middle of nowhere on some streets. I'm surprised we don't take out the parking lines and make that a bike path all the way through. Put in more, more parking lots. I'm just throwing that out there to get a reaction, but I, I just, I can't get on board with, with taking that out. I, I think that should remain as a, as a two-way street.
Mr. Newfeld, did you want to speak to that?
We spend a lot of time talking about traffic, and I want to put it back into context, if we can, that the uptown master plan also has a real focus on walkability. So, we do have a conflict often between the moving of traffic and the moving of people on foot and/or by bicycle, but I think in large part, what, what our consultant was trying to help us with is move in the direction of creating a walkable community. If you consider the, our three pillars that we talk about, the library, the bank theater, and the art center, to create a situation where people are comfortable in parking at the expanded, and I'm going to say expanded John Street, Queen Street parking lot because if I under, if I remember the, the initial drawings, John Street actually gets incorporated into the parking lot between Erie and Queen. So, by way of an aside, that helps address some of the concerns about reduced parking. But I think that in context, again, this is about trying to create that walkable community, especially giving consideration to our three pillars. When somebody is going to the library, they're going for dinner, they're going to the bank theater, they're walking to the art center, they're walking to Mill Street, we're, we are trying to reduce the traffic in our uptown, and we're trying to make the facilities more conducive to pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic. I understand the concerns that council is, some members of council are raising, but I just ask that the, the concept is put into context as we're trying to change the way that our uptown works.
Did you want to speak, Mr. Sharon?
Thank you, your worship. And just to add to what Mr. Newfeld was saying, this is part of our uptown revitalization master plan. This is one of the few areas of green space that we have in our uptown to develop for public space and public gathering space. So, part of this suggestion and this idea is because to take it from a two-lane wide road with sidewalks on each, it takes up a lot of space. The space there is limited. So, this is about the development of Centennial Park, and it would, frankly, one of the biggest benefits is, in addition to the, having people feel more comfortable to be there, is that it simply provides us more green space to develop, and it would likely give that particular area, you know, more of a, of a bang for the buck when it's developed. So, that, that was a big part of the driver, to take a look at the space and try and maximize the...
Okay, thank you. Did you want to comment further?
So, I understand wanting to expand the green space. Really, how much is it going to expand? You take up one lane of traffic, that's about all there is there, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know how you make it wider than 12, it'd be about 12 feet, wouldn't it not, from the center of the road to the, the one lane? It's not a lot of green space, I think, we're adding. The walkable community, you still need traffic to get to the parking lot, so you're still going to have the traffic. You want to make it easy for people to get in and out of, of the area. They still need to get in, they still need to get out. You want to make that as quick and as easy as possible to do. The sidewalks, as long as they're a good repair, they're walkable. We can get from one end to the other. Are we, do we need to make it wider for more people? Is that what a walkable community is? You need more space for them to walk. The other question I had, now that I'm looking at the design here again, the parking lot, will the parking spaces be a normal size, or are they going to be like the winter's parking lot, where it's very difficult to park? Are we going back to the smaller cars? Because we don't know what they're going to drive in 50 years. We can say they're going to drive smaller cars, but we don't know that. We can't forget that we are a, for the most part, we're a blue-collar town, and we drive vehicles that are a little bit larger. Will that be in 50 years? We don't know, but you're still going to need vehicles of that size to deliver goods to the town. And I still think we just need to make it easy for everybody to get in and out of the area. Just a few thoughts.
Alex, did you want to speak to that?
Through you, Madam Mayor. To answer the, the question about the expanded space, currently, right now, John Street is a, it's basically a three-lane cross-section, there's two drive lanes plus a parking lane. So, the road would expand, I would say, almost six meters, or would shrink by almost six meters to allow for one lane, you're looking at, you know, three, 3.3 meters wide. So, you're going to gain almost six meters of green space in the park by moving, by moving the, the northern curb. The parking spaces are guided, are set in our development manual for the parking lots, so I believe they're 10 by 20, if I'm not mistaken. They're 10 feet by 20 feet would be the size of the parking space.
Just to put that in context, is that, is that what I call normal size? What is there currently, or is that the size of the winters?
That would be the normal size of what's there currently. So, as part of this project, too, we would look, because we're expanding into incorporating John Street as part of the parking lot, the parking lot expands, it gets bigger, and we can, we can realign the parking spaces to allow for goods movement through the parking lot. We, so that the truck traffic and the deliveries would still be able to get in to deliver to those buildings. The parking space would be realigned, so we would gain more spaces in the parking lot without purchasing any extra land because we're incorporating the parking space. We're going to be adding in, you know, three accessible spaces on Erie Street. We would add in, which we wouldn't be able to do if we don't eliminate those turning movements, because if there's a car parked there, you can't see past it. So, right now, that's kind of dead space on the, on Erie Street just north of John, by the Centennial Park. There's dead space there because you can't, you, you need this, the sight lines for the cars to make their movements. If you eliminate those movements, you can add three spaces on the street there. We're going to add two more accessible spaces on the other side, so, plus more accessible spaces in the parking lot. So, as, there's a lot of good that comes out of this plan with relations to parking, and I don't know what else I can say.
I think I should say, and I don't know if we all remember, this is Counselor Thiessen's really first exposure to this, so he's got the opportunity to ask questions that some of us have already asked last year, so I just wanted to remind everyone that, the reason for some of your hesitancy, I will say, because we had the opportunity to look at the uptown master plan when it was first, when it was finished, and we all went to R.C. Spencer and had quite a bit of time to look at it, as well as the public meetings. So, feel, feel free to ask questions. I, I encourage it, and I think that's a, it's a good thing when you're asking. If you're still not convinced, well, that's okay, too. You are a work in progress. And Counselor Hammond, I think I have you next.
Thank you, your worship. Really, I just wanted to comment on the, on some of the remarks and some of the concerns raised by the deputy mayor. And it's a good time to do this because we have the fire chief in the audience tonight, and the discussion around putting traffic lights on Clark and Erie have been there for quite a while, and I think, you know, they go back as far as when Blondie's was there and what's going to happen with that building and so on, because if the building would have been torn down, the light of sight, light of sight would have been a lot easier. But in any event, there's been a great deal of discussion about putting a light up there that can be activated from within the fire hall itself with respect to stopping traffic when there is a fire call. And a lot of that came to light, in fact, when, when the EMS or ambulance moved out north of, north. We knew that, you know, they'd be rushing through town more. If the aerial truck happens to be the first one out of the fire hall, with the platform sticking out 10 feet in front of the truck, there's a good chance that sooner or later, there's going to be an accident at that corner. And when we looked back in the day, chief, about putting a traffic light there or a blinking light that can be activated from within the fire hall, that would help prevent and give the ambulance people who are coming up, rushing up that way, notice. So, I just wanted to let you, make you aware, that deputy mayor, that there has been, and I think we should have further discussions, yep, we should have further discussions about that light. So, I'm glad the, the fire chief is here with us tonight.
Anyone else, or are you ready to? Counselor Wilkinson, ready to look at the recommendation?
No, I just have a further comment to one of Counselor Thiessen's points.
Please do.
I'm glad that you brought up, I heard you say, the ball boats. And that's something I put my hand up for earlier. I wanted to speak to those. I see them here on Erie Street, and it's just something I want to say to our own staff, you know, when we've been crucified at times when it comes to our ball boats, you guys know it all too well. I recently sent an email to this team here, saying, I think our guys, our staff is doing a fantastic job of taking council's criticisms, and they're starting to incorporate our ball boats into a workable fashion. Take Coronation, for example. That's fantastic, the way that project has come together. I think, you know, by design, but with the public's input, council's input, I think we're getting there, where our staff knows how to, you know, they're very aware when it comes to ball boats, they've got to be careful with that, and not take it to the extreme, where we're going to, you know, be criticized afterwards for funneling traffic down too tight. So, I just wanted to get that on the record, that I hope that we don't go to the extreme, bring it in so tight, we kind of pull it back just a little bit, again, like we did with Coronation.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to go back to the walkable community scenario. It's great, and I understand the concept of it. However, going back to, with Counselor Thiessen sort of tweaking on this as well, and his discussion, is the fact that we've got to get people downtown to park and get out of their vehicles and walk around or visit the stores. And to me, I think, going into this, if we hinder that traffic, if we're backing up traffic, and people are, you know, I go along with what you say, Mr. Toffelmire, it'll flow nicely, and, you know, we all think that way, and hopefully it does go that route. But on the other side of the coin, to me, if, if everybody's like me, if I can't really get to somewhere easily enough, I'm going to go to the mall. You know, I'm going to go park in a big parking lot in the mall, where I can get out of my car and walk into the stores. And I think it's great that we want to encourage the downtown, and, you know, we, you know, close off Talbot Street is an example, from one end to the other. But we've got to get people there to get out of their vehicles, to walk around. And I guess, that's where my hesitation plays into, into this. Just my comments again, thank you.
Not a problem at all. If I may, I'd like to speak to it. I really like this idea. I think it's an attractive plan. I think it is something that young people with young families will be drawn to. I think this is exactly a walkable community, where you do park your car, and you walk, and you look in store windows, and you go and you sit, or you go to the library and spend a little time. I think it's, is exactly what we want. I look at the European cities, and this is what they have in their core. This is when we talk piazza, this is exactly what we want. And look at how many people come on Mill Street Market Night, and they like it because it feels like you can stay for a while. It's not like you just have to walk through it. And we have been talking about getting the trucks out of the downtown core, and to me, by narrowing the streets somewhat, there will be less of an inclination for those big trucks to come down that way. And I don't have a problem with that. And, and I don't want to appear disrespectful, Counselor Jacobs, but to me, if you're going to the mall, chances are, you're walking a heck of a lot further than you're going to be walking from a parking lot to the core of Leamington. So, to me, I think this is the future. I think this is experiential kind of tourism, experiential kind of evening out, and I think that's what we have to start looking towards. I, I think it's the way of the fu, I believe, actually, that it's the way of the future, and I think that the young people coming up are looking for this kind of a centre. I had a teacher give me a list of the five things that young people graduating this year from grade 12 would look for in Leamington after they're finished post-secondary. And one of the, I think it was the fifth one, first is a job in their field, second is lower crime rate, I don't remember three and four, but one of them was green spaces like Seacliff Park. And I, to me, this is exactly what they're asking for, and we're delivering it. Maybe we're ahead of the times, maybe we're not doing what other communities are doing right now, but maybe they'll be doing what we're doing now in five or eight years. So, to me, this is great. And with that, Counselor, Deputy Mayor, sorry.
Deputy Mayor, I know this is, it's early in the process, but I'm looking forward to the input from the, the community, and maybe we could be swayed, maybe we won't. So, on that note, I'd like to move the recommendation here, one and two, that is here to get the ball rolling.
And with the second, Counselor Wilkinson, certainly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarification, when I said going to the mall, what I meant by that was the fact that access and regress from an area, you know, like you could go into a mall, you could park and then go do your thing, you're not fighting traffic or deterring. That's where I was going with that, just for clarification on that.
Sure, no problem. Okay, questions on the floor? All in favor of the recommendation? Oppo, or, all in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to the budget restatement. And that is Ben. Welcome, Ben. Don't be nervous, you know that we are okay people to deal with.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Leamington's 2019 council-approved budget is prepared on a modified cash basis, which is a balanced budget, include all of the expenditures and revenues for the taxation year. In order to meet the requirement of the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, each year administration restates the budget to present it in two additional ways. One is a PISA restatement, which is on a full accrual basis to match the financial statements accounting. This presentation follows the Canadian rules of the Public Sector Accounting Board, or we call it PISA. And the other one is on the basis as required by Ontario Regulation 28409. The three budget presentations for the 2019 year are shown in Schedule I. It is page five of the report. So, the first column is council-approved budget on a modified cash basis. The budget expenditures match the budgeted revenue, so there is a zero surplus. The second column complies with the rules of the Public Sector Accounting Board, which means it is prepared on the same basis as the audited financial statements. This presentation, sorry, this presentation method results in a nine million surplus. The third column meets the requirements of Ontario Regulation 28409. This presentation method results in an 18 million surplus. Schedule II shows the change from the council-approved budget to the two other budget presentations. Under PISA compliant and Ontario Regulation budgets, capital revenue is recorded in the year that the revenue is used for capital projects. Where in the cash-based budget, the revenue is recorded in the year that the fund is received. For example, we budget grant revenue for a sewer project in 2019. The project might not be completed until 2020. Grant applications are submitted quarterly after the work is done. The 2019 third and fourth quarter grant funding may not be received until early 2020. Under PISA and Ontario Regulation budget, the revenue should be recorded in 2019, but under cash-based accounting, the revenue should be recorded in 2020. Debt payments are treated differently. The council-approved budget records the principal portion of the debt payment as an expenditure, but PISA compliant and Ontario Regulation budget record the principal portion of the debt payment as a reduction of the long-term debt liability, not expenditure. Another example is assets purchase, like the purchase of a truck. The truck purchase is recorded in the council-approved budget as an expenditure, but the PISA compliant budget records on the amortization expense, which might be one-seventh of the purchasing price as an expense in 2019, if the truck has a useful life of seven years. The Ontario Regulation budget does not record the purchase price or the amortization as an expense in 2019. The recommendation is that the PISA compliant budget and the Ontario Regulation budget be received.
Thank you, Ben, very good. Council questions? Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good job, Ben. You cleared up a couple of questions that I had, but thank you very much for presenting that report. Thank you.
That's nice. Thank you.
So, with that, motion to accept the recommendation, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson, all in favor? And that's carried. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Moving on to the water distribution system inspection reports, and that's Shannon Bellow.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. The purpose of this report is to provide counsel with the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks 2019 inspection reports for both the Leamington Union and Leamington-Wheatley Distribution System. These inspections are conducted annually by the ministry to ensure compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act and associated regulations. We're required to present these reports to council and obtain a council resolution confirming receipt, and then also post these online and make them available for public inspection. During the ministry inspections for 2019, there were no items of non-compliance, nor any recommendations provided for consideration for either of the systems. Both systems received a 100% compliance rating and a 0% risk rating. In closing, the recommendation is for council to recommend receipt of the Ontario Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks Drinking Water System Inspection Report for the Leamington Union Distribution System, as well as the report for the Leamington-Wheatley Distribution System. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Moved by Counselor Dunn, seconded by Counselor Hammond, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, Shannon. Fire Prevention Officer, and it's our chief.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, the recommendation before you is to get an extension of our second Fire Prevention Officer to the end of the year. As you know, during the last 12 months, we had a second Fire Prevention Officer, basically to help with all the business licensing applications. In his spare time, we've burdened him with inspections of commercial properties, vulnerabilities, apartment buildings, any requests and complaints, burn permits, station tours, public education. And as of right now, his contract is sent into July 31st. I make, I think we're making tremendous strides. I have, I put some numbers there before you. So, as of, up to June 2017, we'd had 84 inspections. 2018, we had 189. And as of this year, I'm making a correction right now, it says 288, it's actually 488 inspections. So, that's two guys out in the field, hammering away, making sure the public's safe, that's why we're there.
That's great.
So, the total for 2017 was only 164. 2018, half the year was with the second FPO, we did 479. So, as of right now, halfway through the year, we've already exceeded last year's total numbers.
Fantastic, good job.
So, with that, I keep hearing that a municipality wants Leamington to be a great place to live, and the Fire Department wants Leamington to be a safe place to live. I know that's just the fire side of things, I know there's other issues with everything else, but for what I can control, we want it to be safe. And that puts us with two guys going in doors, knocking on doors, visiting all our vulnerabilities, fire drills with the schools. With that, we will be doing a review of our emergency regulating bylaws to make them standard. Right now, with one Fire Prevention Officer, we have a hard time completing what's in our regulating bylaw, so we want to adjust it, whether we have one going through next year or two, that'll be decided in budget time. So, with that, and with the financial impact, we have his wages covered, basically, for the rest of the year.
That's wonderful. Your being safe and our being a good place to live go hand in hand, we appreciate that. So, council, questions for the chief? I'm going to start on this side, if you don't mind, I'll start with Counselor Hammond.
Your Worship, thank you. Chief, these are great numbers, and, you know, I know you've been really watching the stats to make sure that, you know, that it warrants a second officer. And I think that it's even going to get busier when we finally do get our Margaret Worker Housing Report, which we haven't got yet, that will change things. I know that business licensing has really added a lot of work to that department, so I think, having said that, it certainly looks like that the second person is well worth putting in place, so, good job.
Through you, Worship. Also, all the tourism activities you guys are bringing in, that all creates work for us, and it's awesome work.
Good.
Between Mill Street, the Rib Fest, all those activities creates a job for us to go down and inspect and make sure they're safe. Last weekend, we made sure everything's safe, and then they had a fire.
Yes.
And the stuff we made sure they had there, it worked, so it's...
Good.
Worked.
Great, and all the new housing and building that's going on too, it's important, yeah. So, having said that, I can move the report with looking for a second over the corner.
Well, look for a secondary. Counselor Jacobs? And Counselor Thiessen, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, good job on this report, and I'm glad to see that the second Prevention Officer lit a fire into the first one to get that many inspections done. The, just curious, how well are the inspectors received when they show up to a place and say, "We're going to do a fire inspection"? Are the places all notified ahead of time? Are there cases where you might just show up and say, "Listen, we'd like to do an inspection", or what is the procedure on that, and how well are you received?
Through you, Worship. A normal day activity, we call ahead, make a, set up appointments, so they know we're coming, so there's no surprises. We go through education first, so we could be like Toronto and go down there and lay fines and tickets right off the bat. We educate them first, so we show them everything they need to do to make sure they're compliant. We usually give them 30 days, which is the normal standard, and within then, they call us back when they're ready to go. So, sometimes it takes overnight, sometimes it takes months, depends on the severity of the incident. So, overall, we're well received, because, as I said, we work with them, we educate them, we give them all the material they need, so there's no surprises.
How long does it typically take for them to come into compliance? Is it fairly rapid? Are they, are they doing it kicking and screaming in some cases, or are they willing to jump right in and do it? And, oh, I guess, yeah, it, how quickly does that happen?
Through you, Worship. It all depends on the severity. If it just needs smoke alarms, or their extinguishers checked and serviced, how soon can that guy get there? Some of the bigger ones, if they need their alarm panels inspected and tested and verified, their stand pipes, their alarm systems. Most of them just ask for time. There is people that aren't compliant, and they've been, they've been given orders, they've been ordered to close, they've been shut down, for the safety of the people that are living in those buildings.
So, just one more question, then. So, once you've inspected a place, are there now regular inspections, every, scheduled every year, every two years, every three years, or is that, how does that happen?
Through you, Worship. Through the regulating bylaw, it tells us how often we have to go. Vulnerable occurrences, we go every year, fire drills we do twice a year. All the other places, commercial, residential, high-rises, the regulating bylaw states how often we go back. So, depends, next year, if we can have a second guy again as well, then we can set our standard, we can go these properties every two years, these every three years, these every year, so we'll lay it out for you once we know everything's going.
And with that, the motion's on the floor. Called the question, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Moving on to outfitting the dump truck and the chassis, I'm assuming that's you, Mr. Sheridan?
Thank you, Your Worship. In April of this year, council approved the purchase of a new freightliner truck. This second part of this procurement process is to procure for the outfitting of that vehicle. So, a tender was issued for the outfitting of the cabin chassis. We did only receive one tender submission on that particular tender. However, the good news is, it is from the same company that has outfitted our last two dump truck replacements, so it is certainly good in this low-bid tender world we live in to have some consistency in the suppliers. in to have some consistency in the suppliers, obviously, for continuity of parts and repairs, and in training staff how to use it. Given that we only had one bid, we did go back and take a look at the cost, what we paid in previous years, and for council's information, we paid $115,000 in 2017 and $108,000 in 2016. So the price is fair. It's close to the budget number that we had predicted. To that point, based on the way the budget's currently laid out, excuse me, this particular purchase, we're looking at an $8,400 deficit. However, I did want to note that we had a very conservative $5,000 value in there for the sale of the existing asset. Through GOV deals, over the last few years, we've been realizing much better prices on those asset sales, so we expect more than $5,000 when we put this particular vehicle up. And in addition to that, we've had some under-budget purchases in the equipments account and public works, so we will be within budget in that particular area. So the recommendation before council is that the purchase of the dump body, flares, salt or necessary attachments be awarded to Viking Caves Limited of Mount Forest, Ontario.
Counsel Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know I've always had a concern about getting one bid, and I know that we can't get them no matter what you do, because we're just not doing it. But, and I know they brought this up before, but has been any thought about collaboration between other municipalities for a joint buying structure? I know when I was in, when I had service that was within Chatham-Kent, that they had a combined purchasing network set up, and then I could, because I was on a contract, I could purchase with them through that at a much reduced price. And I know we started off, the start of the season, with during budget deliberations, that we're going to need two dump trucks, two pickup trucks, or, you know, whatever it may be. And other municipalities, I'm sure, do the same thing, and I, like, to me, it would seem like some merit. I don't know if it's a possibility to do that or not, but, you know, maybe some thought could be thrown in that direction, because I'm sure other municipalities would be saving on as well. Just a thought. Thank you.
Counsel Dunn.
Your Madam Mayor. The used truck process, refresh my memory, Rob, how are we going about getting rid of that asset?
Through your worship, counsel, in the time I've been here, we've actually done it three different ways, and the most recent, frankly, has been the best. We're getting the most out of our sale of those used assets as we ever have. We used to send them to local auction, and the bidding process would occur, and the highest bidder would get it. Those local auctions, we were getting scrap metal prices for these things, so that wasn't working. So then we tried to mandate that the bidders on these vehicles trade in, accept these vehicles as trade-ins. Again, getting very little for these vehicles. I think it was actually a burden to force a lot of these dealerships to take them. Most recently, we've been participating in the GOV deals program, where we essentially put our vehicle up on GOV deals. Again, it's a bidding-type process, like a, hate to say, but like an eBay-type process, where they put the vehicles in, and contractors, maybe some small municipalities that don't, that do not have the demand or the financial capacity to update their equipment, will bid and essentially purchase through that process. So the highest bidder wins, and basically, through that organization, they look after the shipping of all of the equipment that we send out.
Moved by Counsel Jacobs, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All in favor? And that's carried. Moving on to Communities in Bloom, and that's Laura Roach.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Administration has been contacted by the very generous Honey Foundation through the Windsor-Essays Community Foundation, who would like to donate an additional $8,000 to the municipality. The funds are to be earmarked for the project that the Communities in Bloom organization and the Leamington Horticultural Society have proposed to undertake at Shotten Parquet. The foundation previously donated $10,000 for this project, which is scheduled to be completed this fall. The additional funds will expand the scope of this project. The municipality will be acting as an intermediary for this donation, which means that the funds must remain in care of control of the municipality to ensure that the project is completed as intended. Leamington's manager of public works has been leading the discussion with the groups to make sure that the project complements the Uptown Reinvention Strategy. Final reporting to the foundation on the actual project deliverables will be shared responsibility with the organizations as well as the municipality. The funds will remain in our custody until the invoices are provided, and the project cost will not exceed the total donation. There will be a net zero budget impact for receiving these funds and directing them to the community groups. So the recommendation before council this evening is that council accept the additional $8,000 grant from the Honey Family Foundation Endowment Fund through the Windsor-Essays Community Foundation, and that council grant the additional $8,000 funds to be used for the Communities in Bloom project in conjunction with the Leamington Horticultural Society. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Any comments, questions? Counsel Dunn.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just a comment, Community in Bloom meeting, they talked about their plans for it and getting together with all their partners, as well as the municipality. And I know the Tours Department also has plans regarding that, and I really look forward to the municipality staying fully focused, especially with the Mill Street being such a success, and just adding to that, that really does excite me, so, thank you to everybody.
I'm open for a motion. Moved by Counsel Dunn, seconded by Counsel Hammond. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, Laura. Moving on to the review of police services. Ms. Orton.
The Police Services Act requires that every municipality provide adequate and effective police services in accordance with its needs. The Act states that a municipality's responsibility to provide these services shall be discharged in one of the following ways. Council may establish its own police force. The council may enter into an agreement with one or more other councils to constitute a joint board and joint force. Council may enter into an agreement with one or more other councils to amalgamate police forces. Council may enter into an agreement with the council of another municipality to have its police services provided by that municipality if the municipalities are contiguous. Council may enter into an agreement, either alone or jointly with another municipality, to have police services provided by the OPP. And with the Ontario Civilian Police Commission's approval, the council may adopt a different method of providing police services. For many years, Leamington utilized a municipal force. However, in 2007, council received a report regarding the cost of police services, including the types and levels of services being provided and possible police service alternatives. Over the course of the next three years, council and administration worked through the process of obtaining the OPP's proposal for costs, which included a presentation from the OPP relating to its proposal, the municipality conducting its own financial and service analysis of the proposal, holding public consultation meetings, passing a resolution to adopt the OPP's April 2009 proposal, and finally, receiving the decision of the Ontario Civilian Police Commission dated July 27, 2010, which consented to the abolishing of the Leamington Police Service, terminating of those members of that service, and entering into a contract for policing with the OPP. The initial contract with the OPP was for a term of five years and commenced on December 3, 2010. A second contract for service was entered into, and that contract will expire on December 31, 2019. In 2018, the municipality paid a net total of just under $5 million to the OPP for the provision of service, and in 2019, the municipality budgeted a net amount of just over $5 million. That represents a 5.9% increase from 2008 and approximately 18% of the municipality's total budget. Recently, council has expressed a concern related to the level of service provided by the OPP, and has indicated its desire to consider alternatives for the provision of police service. As council is likely aware, the town of Amisburg recently reviewed and considered its police service model, and in mid-2017, issued a request for a proposal for police service. As a result of that request for proposal, Amisburg entered into a contract with the city of Windsor, and that was the only proposal received. The city commenced providing policing services on January 1, 2019, following receipt of the commission consenting to the contract between Amisburg and Windsor. Consent of the commission was required due to the fact that Amisburg is not contiguous to Windsor, as is required by Section 5, Sub 1, 4 of the Police Services Act. And that decision followed the precedent-setting case from April 2017, when the commission approved a proposal submitted by the city of St. Mary's to have its police services provided by the city of Stratford. During the process of review and preparation of the request for proposal, Amisburg utilized internal staff resources, as well as the services of Michael Mitchell, a consultant with extensive and specialized knowledge of organizing and structuring police services, including the undertaking of organizational reviews, financial analysis, reviewing financial and contractual proposals for contract policing, and coordinating request for proposal processes. Mr. Mitchell has also assisted many municipalities throughout Ontario, Ontario ministries, and foreign governments with organizational reviews, costing analysis, and evaluation of services particularly related to policing and public safety. This regard, it is recommended that the municipality retain Mr. Mitchell to assist the municipality with this process, beginning with the holding of a special meeting where he would present and review the options for police services available under the Act, advise us to the benefits and liabilities related to each option, and discuss the steps which may be involved in connection with the implementation of each option. Once administration has had an opportunity to review the current OPP contract with OPP administration, a further report will be presented to council with recommendations as to how to deal with the same while council considers its options and determines how it wishes to move forward with police services. It is anticipated that legal services budget includes sufficient funds to cover the costs associated with Mr. Mitchell attending a meeting with council. That first step is anticipated to cost less than $3,000. So the recommendation at this time is that council authorize retaining Mr. Mitchell for the purposes of undertaking the work set out in this report, and that the Director of Legal and Legislative Services be authorized to execute all documents required to affect this retainer.
Thank you, Ruth. Counsel Wilkinson.
Thank you, Ruth. I know it's early in the process here, but this is the first step, so for him to come in front of us with some data, it's going to cost us $3,000 just for that. I don't know if you have any, if you're anticipating how long, how many times we're going to have him in front of us, like, what would that end number be by the time we're finished with his services? Did Amisburg give any sort of indication what their end number was when they went through this process?
The first step is really just one meeting, where he would come and attend for as many hours as it takes, but he anticipated it would be just a morning, to just review those options. And then any next, any further steps that would require his services would be discussed in a secondary report. So Amisburg experience was a little bit different. It depends on how much we wish to rely upon his services. He provided some guidance as far as the development of the RFP with Amisburg, but a lot of that work was undertaken internally with their internal resources and an external legal counsel. So I think our experience might be a little bit different, depending upon what council's approach is, following his initial consultation.
Counsel Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ruth, in your report here, you're saying with the contiguous, so theoretically, without going to, I guess, an outside source to get authorization, the three options that we currently would have without intervention would be OPP, Chatham-Kent, or forming our own municipal police force? Would that be correct?
Well, the Act sets out the availability of the services that can be utilized by the municipality, so your own force, contracting a service with another municipality, jointly offering the services with other municipalities, amalgamating a force. Theoretically, I suppose an opportunity could arise where a municipality that is even further away than Chatham-Kent, or Windsor, or LaSalle, that have their own municipal police forces. I think that might be a little bit of a more difficult sell to the commission that would have to approve that relationship. Currently, the legislation indicates that without the approval of the commission, a municipality can contract with a neighboring municipality, like a municipality that is abutting, that the municipality that requires the service without the commission's approval. So those are some of the options. Mr. Mitchell might have other options that might be available, some of which might require the commission's approval. But, and if it went forward with, to the commission for approval, a business case for that relationship would have to be provided and approved.
I appreciate your comments, but I guess, for looking at this, I would find it difficult at the commission, when we're surrounded by services of the OPP, and then we have Chatham-Kent on one side, that they would really go for an outside service, say, somebody from London, as an example, if services out of London would come down. I think they would have a pretty hard decision on that one, would they not, in your estimation?
I would suggest that would be likely very unusual, that they would approve something like that, but I can't really say.
The only reason I'm asking is, you know, before we get too deep into this, you know, I just want to be sure that our options are going to be wide open, but I'm sure this Mr. Mitchell will get us on the straight and narrow. Thank you.
Did you want to speak to this, or, sorry, gosh, Mr. Neufeld?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I think one of the things that is unique about the municipal world is that administration, especially senior administration, are expected to be experts in so many different areas. We've become experts in a lot of areas because of the experiences that we have on a day-to-day basis. One of the things that we don't have a lot of experience in is guiding council as it relates to the options for policing. And so this, Mr. Mitchell, does have these experiences, and will be able to at least provide some options that we may not even have considered. And I'll give you an example, and while I'm not necessarily advocating for it, nor am I speaking against it, but perhaps a regional police force is something that would be considered, that we wouldn't have to be going it alone, but rather, we would be given an option to start speaking to neighboring municipalities about how we go about creating a regional police force, which may or may not involve the OPP, or the city of Windsor, or Chatham-Kent, or whatever it is. I think that's why Ruth's recommendation that we engage Mr. Mitchell is such a good one, because this is one of those areas where administration is saying to council, "We really don't have the day-to-day expertise to be able to lead council in the particular options. We can certainly be involved as we put together, you know, if we go the route of an RFP, we can be involved with council in determining what the service levels are." We've had a lot of discussion around the service levels that we are currently receiving, that they seem to be insufficient, and if we want to increase those service levels, that's something that we can put into the RFP. Mr. Mitchell has experience in doing that sort of thing. So those are my comments. We don't know what we don't know about this. We will help council as much as we can, but it's one of those situations where I think outside help will help us to identify what information we need.
Can I, before you make a motion, I'd like to speak to it, if I may? I think this is our opportunity to I think this is our opportunity to look and see what else is available out there. I think when we made that decision, when the decision was made, not we didn't make it, but when it was made back in, well, prior to 2010, everyone did their homework. The homework was done, and now we have some time and experience under our belts, and we know now what we want and what we don't want. And I think we need to have somebody guide us through that process of doing an RFP. We need to, as counsel, have input, admin as well, but I think when we put this RFP forward, it has to be as perfectly suited to our community as we can possibly make it. In the case of Amisburg, when they did theirs, the OPP did not even submit. And if we have requirements that they don't feel they can qualify for or want to qualify for, then they won't bother. But I think this is our opportunity to set the bar. We'll be setting it higher than it was set back in 2010, let me tell you that, because we know now. Our community has changed, our requirements have changed, and I think it's time that we do that just based on due diligence alone. And to have an expert who comes to the table with lots of experience with different communities, I think this is well worth the money. And I don't see us quibbling over the amount of money this is going to cost us, because it will serve us for at least, I'm going to say, at least 10 years going forward. And yes, I think too, the possibility for a regional system might be, this might be a first step. We might be the ones leading the way, as we've led the way with the regional transit system. And to me, I'm open to that. I'm open to beyond Chatham-Kent. Let's see what we can get. Let's see what we can get, the best bang for our buck. We expect the best service from our departments. When we put our money into engineering and into public works and into tourism, we expect the best for our dollar. And we do not feel, and we have those expectations, and when our staff doesn't deliver, we let them know. And so this is the same case in policing. If we're not getting what we want for what we're paying, then we need to look elsewhere. So we're doing our due diligence by exploring all the possibilities, and I think that's good on us. I think that shows we're doing our job, we're listening to our residents, and we're moving forward. And ultimately, we may decide to go with exactly what we've had, but we've at least put our nose to the grindstone, we've done our due diligence, we will have done our homework, which is always so crucial in any decision that we make. And I believe it was Counselor Hammond that said to me last week, this may be the most important decision that we make in these four years, because it will be long, it will be far-reaching. So I do believe we need to have some help with it. I don't think we have the skills to do it alone, and if our admin says they don't have all of those tools in their toolbox, I think going with professional help is exactly what we should do. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't disagree. I think too that we need to review the policing. I think we do need some outside assistance. I just get nervous when they say the first step is $3,000, but then after that, we really don't know. I'd like to see a little firmer number. Mr. Mitchell must know what it might take to get us to where we need to go. Is it $10,000? Is it an additional $50,000? I mean, we don't want this all of a sudden be costing us $100,000. I would just like to see something a little firmer in that, but I do agree that we need to do that. And this may also get the attention of the OPP, and maybe they will send us the resources. Talking with the officers this morning, they said, give us the resources, we can get the job done, but we need the resources. If we can get the Windsor office and the Aurelia office to see that we need more resources, maybe this will do it, and maybe that would be the best $25,000, $50,000 we spent. You're right. Thank you.
Ms. Orton, did you want to speak to that?
I think once Mr. Mitchell attends and counsel gives some direction as to the direction they wish to go, whether it be an RFP, or whether it be examining perhaps a joint force, I think it's a little bit preliminary to ask for further determination as to how much it might cost, until we really know what direction counsel wishes to go. Certainly at that time, then I will canvas those costs with Mr. Mitchell and bring something further forward. This is really just that preliminary step. Counsel may decide not to do any of the above and just continue on with the OPP perhaps, and then there would be no further cost. We can deal with that internally, but once we know what counsel's direction is, we'll certainly bring something back with a firmer number.
Great, thank you. I had, I also had Counselor Dunn, sorry. No, Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. I want to move the acceptance of the report with a comment, and I agree wholeheartedly with everything you've said. We won't know what we don't know until we get some guidance from somebody that can help us. So with that, as I said, I move the acceptance of the report.
Seconded by Counselor Dunn. Did you want to speak to that, Mr. Neufeld?
Just very briefly, I understand prudency as it relates to spending for this sort of professional to help us, but I'll remind counsel that we're talking about a $6 million annual budget. So if you consider it over a five-year term, we're talking about significant monies that we're spending to seek this guidance for an amount of money that is... We want to be prudent, but let's remember how much we're actually spending a year on this particular service.
Great, thanks. So the motion's on the floor, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Ruth. So moving on to other matters for approval, and we're looking at the support of the new regional hospital site for Windsor Essex County, and I'll ask the deputy mayor.
Thank you, worthy mayor. I've asked our CAO, and then I've also asked you to maybe look into it. We are the only municipality in Windsor Essex that has not put forward our support for this, and I feel that we were a little reluctant, I was anyway, because I thought maybe we might be losing our hospital. But I don't know, I think with what I've heard, we're not. So I would like to move Lake Shore's resolution there to support the regional hospital for Windsor Essex, so we can get at least on, that they were there to, for the government who is in town tonight, the premier, that we allow them that we're ready for, we're ready for the build also, as long as we don't lose Leamington.
I had that conversation with the Warden McNamara on, I believe it was Wednesday, as well as Janice Caffrey from Hotel Dew, and they assured us that our hospital is definitely not on the chopping block at all. So I am supporting it based on the information that I got. I think the fact that we will have a new hospital that will offer new equipment and new possibilities, that people don't have to travel the 401 to London or across the river to Detroit, would be an advantageous thing to have in our county. I think it will behoove everyone. It'll be a reason for people to move here, because healthcare is a big concern, and we have been under service for many years, so to have a site like that will also be an attraction for young doctors and their families to move to this area. For me, I am on board with it, and I don't believe the rumor mongers that we have to be fearful. And I think we've also seen the voice of our community and what it can do when it becomes threatened. When that hospital becomes threatened, it is not something that we take lying down. So with that, I also will support it. So I need a second, I'm sorry. Counselor Jacobs, sorry, I didn't catch that. Any other comments, questions? All in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, deputy mayor. Notice of motion, there are none. Open session for counsel and admin. Is that now or later? We'll start with the report on closed session, then.
I have two reportings on closed session. One from the last council meeting, which was July 9. A closed meeting was held at 5:40 PM prior to the open session to discuss confidential report LLS 4919 dated July 8, 2019, regarding enforcement of cannabis regulation, Part II Cannabis Producers, which was considered in closed session pursuant to subsection 239 2E of the Municipal Act. Counsel gave administration direction at the meeting. Proper notice of the meeting was given, and it adjourned at 6:04 PM. Reporting from tonight's closed session, July 23, 2019, a closed meeting was held at 5:30 PM to discuss confidential report LLS 5219 dated July 18, 2019, regarding a purchase of 4042 Mill Street West, Leamington, Removal Condition, which was considered in closed session pursuant to subsection 239 2C of the Municipal Act. Counsel provided direction to administration. Proper notice of the meeting was given, and the meeting adjourned at 5:45 PM.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to consideration of bylaws.
Bylaw 42-19 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held July 23, 2019.
Moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson, all in favor? And that's carried. Now, we're at notices of motion, and there are none. Open session for counsel and admin. We'll start with you, Counselor Dunn.
You, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to bring to the attention of our community that through the Kingsville-Leamington Community Engagement, myself and the migrant worker community program, we started a welcome center, and it's being held at the Anglican Church every second Sunday starting July 21. It was our first welcome center. It's open to the migrant workers, but also to the whole community. It's a way that we can engage the migrant worker community to provide information, as well as hopefully with Janice Dawson, she's provided a lot of information from the hospital for the workers. We're also looking at having bike repairs and possibly eyeglass, eye examinations, blood pressure, other things for them, and just a community get-together. And it seems like we started off with about 35 workers. Their time is very limited, back and forth, it's a good location with the Anglican Church right there on the way, and we hope to advertise it more and get more people out and more volunteers so we all come together and really be able to pass some information along. So kudos to everybody for helping. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Neufeld?
Thank you, mayor. It is a very rare occasion that I get a chance to disconnect from my position, and it is only with the great confidence that I have in my director's team, my senior management team, that has allowed me to disengage from my role for a couple of weeks. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank my director's team, and especially Laura Roach for taking on the added responsibility as the acting CAO, which gave me an opportunity to relax a little bit. Despite the fact that I was not connected directly to the municipality, my wife will attest to the fact that I was looking at the curbing and the bike lanes as we saw them and the locations that we visited, so I wasn't completely turned off. But I wanted to thank the senior administration for that great confidence that they give me.
Great. If there are no other comments, statement of members non-debatable, motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor, Counselor Jacobs, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, and good night.